We are going to get started. This is our regular meeting, January 9th, 2020, of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. Happy New Year to those of you that weren't here on Tuesday. We generally start our meetings with introductions. So Leslie Hervey is at the end of the day as to my right. She is the Assistant to the Clerk of the Board, Jackie Pianyoto. I am Denise Treehouse. Next to me is the Vice President of the Commission, Stephanie Summerdumas. County Administrator Jeff Aludo is next to her, and our Legal Counsel, Michael Friedman, is sitting to my far left. We'll start with a silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you can. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We do have a speaker's card. All this is related to the public hearing, so we're going to hold on that for one second. We'll have comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summerdumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to wish everyone that's watching and everyone here a Happy New Year and a good holiday season, and looking forward to 2020 and the challenges and accomplishments that we all will have during that period. Just two general comments. I oftentimes get calls from our residents, I think because they know I will listen to them, but oftentimes I wonder if it's appropriate even for the issues that they bring forward to me. So our team has thought about maybe giving administrators some frequently asked questions and to not only ensure that we're sending them to the right place, but so you can kind of let us know where they should go. And so it's never really any kind of pat answer for that, but we'd like to have some direction, make sure we're doing things right, and also not having people wait until we, until I try to figure out where they should go, but let them know that their concerns are very well taken, and we want to move as expeditiously as we can to answer those concerns.
Be happy to meet with your office on that, Commissioner. As we all know, we get a huge array and assortment of questions on this floor and throughout the county, and we've got a lot of expertise in different corners and different pockets of the administration and the Clerk's office, et cetera, so be happy to sit down. I can have Teresa Giulio in my office coordinate a meeting to make sure that we are structuring those frequently asked questions and make sure that everyone has consistent information on how to answer them, where to direct them, et cetera. So that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Madam President, next Thursday I plan on presenting a resolution or a by leave as it relates to our transition on our team for our new Chief of Staff, and I'll be doing that next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, very good. I have a couple of things. I've been asked a number of times, and I just came from a forum, to talk a little bit about the upcoming year on behalf of the Commission. And so I just wanted to note a couple of things that were accomplished in the last year, some things that we will be continuing to move forward with, and some of the things that we know are on the horizon for the upcoming year. So by way of continuation, my expectation is we'll continue to have our, well, I know we will because we passed a resolution about kind of a forward-facing commission where we have meetings once a month out in the community in the evenings to be as accessible as we can be, and also the state of the county will once again be held at Memorial Hall, free and open to the public, to allow as many people to come and listen and participate as possible. We will continue to work on the sewer rate fairness, the affordability aspect of how we deal with some of the issues at MSD. I was just asked today about the impervious surface work that we are doing, and so this work continues related to MSD. We have kept rates flat for another year, but we have work to do to make sure that the system is treating everyone fairly, and so that work will continue into this coming year. Through that heroin coalition, we will continue to work on issues of addiction in the community. It's been challenging. The issue of addiction is a challenge to begin with, but the work of the heroin coalition is going to continue. Megan Gosney is the person that's leading that effort internally with many, many partners throughout the community. And so while we are still under the scourge of this opioid epidemic, we will continue to do smart work and hopefully impactful work related to that, not the least of which is the reconfiguration of the jail. And that work began last year or the year before. We got a grant from the state for 2.5 million to retrofit a floor of the jail to accommodate treatment beds that will hopefully come online at the end of this year and accommodate 90 treatment beds in the Justice Center. So that's a big deal, and it's a step forward for Hamilton County, but it's just part of the work that the heroin coalition is doing. And then also, by way of continuation, is the work of the Commission on Women and Girls. We passed a lot of resolutions at the end of last year, a lot of which were related to gender-based violence and period products in schools, and so I'm looking forward to see that play out in the upcoming year. And then a couple of new things that are on the horizon. The census is one of them. That will be this year. We are partnering with the city and many folks in the community to try to get every single person counted in Hamilton County to the benefit of this community. And so we have mentioned this numerous times, and we will continue to badger people about it. If you want a job, it's a good-paying job, $23 an hour. You set your own hours, and those jobs are available right now. $26 an hour. I thought it was 23. Regardless, they're good-paying jobs. And so go to the website, and if you know of anybody that would like to be part of that work, please join the effort because it's a collective effort, and we're all excited about that opportunity. We will be continuing our work on the Headquarters Hotel. That will likely resolve itself sometime here in the beginning of the year, but it's on the horizon, and we're anxious to get that resolved and move forward when it comes to the Headquarters Hotel to the benefit of especially the Convention Center and some of the economic activity in that part of the city and the county. And then lastly, we started this last year, and actually we started a little before that, but we've been talking a little bit differently about poverty and about the county's response to our role in trying to make sure people in this community have the stability to raise their families and have housing and transportation and jobs. And so I know Commissioner Dumas, you have been part of this, where we are trying to put a new emphasis on some of the underlying reasons people don't feel stable, and we have poverty in our community. Our housing strategy has been part of that, and we have started to redirect some of our dollars to this effort. And so I expect that we will continue to look through that and look at how we can be a strategic partner with the folks that are doing the studies in our community to have the county be at the forefront of that effort when it relates to jobs, transportation, and housing. And so those are the kinds of things I think that we will be working on. It's a lot. It's always a lot here at the county, but I am personally optimistic about the year to come. We've provided some stability through the sales tax revenue that will be coming in starting mid-year and then ongoing, and so that will help us stabilize some of the work we do, but also allow us to look a little bit differently about how we do what we do and the potential here at the county. So I think I entered the year with a lot of optimism. I hope it's shared, but that's, I just wanted to give a bit of an overview as to where I hope we had as the President of the County Commission. Beyond that, I have one by-leave item. It's a resolution to designate the official representative and alternate for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of the CCAO. We are members of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, and so the President of the Commission and the Vice President generally serve in those two capacities, so I am going to move that we approve of this resolution.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Administrator Aludo?
Thank you, Commissioners. Two by-leaves and just a couple of comments. First by-leave in your packet is a resolution amending the membership of the Hamilton County Fair Future Task Force for the purpose of reinvigorating the Hamilton County Fair. This adds two members, I believe, to the Commission. The Administration recommends approval. I believe one of those members is from the Urban League. I believe that's a member that will be named at a future date. There's also Darren Hall, who would be a new member representing the public and development community. Darren is known for past work with the county as well, so I think he's familiar to many of us at the county. I'm sure both of these representatives, especially when the member from the Urban League is named, will do a fantastic job on the committee. The Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, do you want to provide any background to this one?
I would like to say, Madam President, thank you, that as we looked at this Hamilton County Fair Future Task Force, we saw the need as a commission to increase the diversity or to add diversity on this task force. And so because it's covering a wide range of people that will be impacted for this Hamilton County venture, so I thank the Commission, and we worked together to get some names in Holly, to get some diversity in the task force, and we definitely needed to do that. So we'll be moving forward on that.
Yep. Thank you. And I just want to thank you and your representative to this task force. I think it was an omission to not ensure that we had the kind of diversity that we need on all of our boards and commissions. And so having seen that, your office brought it to the attention of Holly and others, and so I'm glad that we're taking this action. I think it's really important. So I will move that we approve of the resolution amending the members of the Hamilton County Fair Future Task Force for the purpose of reinvigorating the Hamilton County Fair.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second item is a budget adjustment. It's budget adjustment number two in your packet. This is a $222,000 reduction in expenditures for mental health and recovery services. The amount was over-appropriated related to the available resources. These amounts, these dollars are appropriated for services to be provided over several years, so there's no real reduction in services associated with it. We just need to make sure that the expenditures align with the available resources. So the Administration recommends approval.
All right. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
I will move that we approve of budget adjustment number two, $222,235 reduction for mental health and recovery services.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And then just a couple of comments. One, Madam President, just to follow up on your comment about just the work of the county. So as is tradition, the Administration will be working over the course of about the next month and a half or so to develop an administrative work plan that aligns with the county's 2019, 2020 policy agenda as passed by the Board last year. And along with that, we'll be completing a summary memo of major work that was accomplished by the Administration over the past year as well. We'll deliver that to the Board for your use and information, but we'll certainly be coordinating with you as it relates to the administrative work plan that is developed to guide our work for this year and what constitutes the second and final year of the two-year policy agenda, which will go into development of that new policy agenda for '21 and '22 later on this year. Secondly, just a couple of items of note. Madam President, as well, you had mentioned the Headquarters Hotel project. I just wanted to mention a couple of things just to give a status on a few projects of note. We have planned, I believe we have a CFA meeting set for the 24th of January, at least it's tentatively set now. I think we're still maybe checking for attendance of some of the membership, but we're looking tentatively at January 24th for the next CFA meeting. The port continues its evaluation and due diligence of the hotel development project that has been discussed with the Board while we are also simultaneously preparing for a bond issuance through the port using transient occupancy tax resources to get that property under control. So we'll be discussing this over the course of the next several weeks with CFA members to keep them in the loop prior to their meeting and also keeping the Board apprised as this develops and as we move forward on multiple tracks, both the due diligence on the hotel and the bond issuance. Secondly, we have a couple of projects that are in the midst of moving forward. You mentioned one of them, Madam President, the Justice Center expansion project. We just received word and approval from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections that we are cleared to move forward with construction bidding for that project. So later on this month or early February, we'll be releasing bids for construction of that 90-bed expansion of the Justice Center. And again, as you indicated, this was a state capital grant-funded project of around $2.5 million. We anticipate that that project will be complete in late 2020. We also have the Crime Lab project moving forward. That project remains on time and on budget. We're looking for a completion date on that of late 2020 with move-in of the coroner's staff in early to mid-2021. So that's just some comments on a couple of projects. You'd also mentioned poverty reduction, and I did want to note, Commissioners, I believe each of you had received earlier on this week a summary memo from Job and Family Services on just a lot of the tremendous work that has occurred at JFS over the course of the last year, whether it was in kinship care, the area of some of the programming we're doing around foster care, but in particular, as you noted, Madam President, the issue of poverty reduction and some of the programming that we're doing to help lift families out of poverty. And I believe Moira is here.
She is. She's in the back.
Is she? So I don't necessarily want to put her on the spot, but I thought, number one, one of the programs highlighted in here is Project Lift. I think it would be appropriate to schedule that for a staff meeting in the future. But Moira, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and just providing maybe a little bit of an update on Project Lift, what it is, maybe some of the other components of this memo, because there's just so much good work going on over there, I just thought it might be a good time to highlight it.
Yes, thank you. So Project Lift, first of all, thank you because you were a part of it when you helped us raise the PRC amount so we could help families up to 200% of poverty from 150. So that was a huge effort, so thank you for allowing us to do that. But really, it's a collaboration with many organizations throughout the community in terms of how we help individuals that want to be a part of that project, really hopefully move them in the continuum of poverty and hopefully long-term out of poverty. To date, we are working with 20 sponsor agencies, and we've been really strategic at making sure that we looked at the ZIP codes throughout the whole county and looked at poverty rates and make sure we're representing families throughout the whole county. We've reached, we've worked with 454 households, which equates to about 1,028 children we accomplished in 2019. And we just really started that project in April, so we have high hopes for what that's going to be. So it's a great partnership, though, with lots of community sponsor agencies throughout the community working together. And what's one of the foundations of this project is that it's driven by families and individuals. They are telling us what they need, and then we're responding to that. So again, a great collaboration, lots of great staff working on that, so thank you for that. You had mentioned the kinship program. Again, thank you for putting that into the levy plan. The kinship program's going well. To date, we have, there are 650 children in the program, which equates to about 400 families, so that's amazing. And I just wanted to tell you too, I think this speaks to some of the initiatives too that we're trying with kinship. When we looked at our custody numbers in 2017, total children in custody were 3,554. At the end of 2019, it was 2,804. But I think more pronounced and worth noting is when we looked at children entering custody in 2017, it was 1,538. The number at the end of 19 was 949. So really, the staff have done a tremendous job really working and finding initiatives to reduce the number of children coming into care. And when we still look at the amount of children with custody, about 40% are with kinship placement. So the staff are doing a tremendous job working with that, and certainly the kinship dollars helped support that initiative. So thank you. The other positive thing that I would like to just highlight from the memo is the work that the team is going to be doing in ZIP Code 45225, which is the General Millville area. We're going to be co-located there and really being intentional with how we engage families and do some really centered-person case management and having a presence in the community so we can build trust and then bring other partners to the table to help engage our families. Also very excited about the project that we were selected by Greenlight. If you remember, Greenlight selected us to do the first Placement for Youth initiative that was very successful in California, and that project is really geared towards youth exiting care and really helping them have an employment coach, a life coach, in addition to the JFS staff person, but really providing more support so that we can help make sure that our youth are better prepared. And I think you did hear about when Vanessa Freitag talked about the great work that's happening from 4C, but how the staff have really done a great job making sure that our childcare providers are up and ready for the four-star, five-star rating. And lastly, Georgetown University selected Hamilton County. They came, this first time they've been on the road, they came here on site and worked with Cincinnati Public Schools, Job and Family Services, and the courts specifically about how we can be more intentional about making sure children don't enter the Juvenile Justice Center. And you might say, why is that important to us? Because we see a strong correlation between juvenile justice and child welfare, so if we can reduce those amounts, it'll really have a positive impact on our kids. So really excited about the projects, and the staff have done a really tremendous job doing those.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight that briefly. I think, as the Board is well aware, the community obviously stepped up huge in terms of its support of children services through the levy program that was enacted a couple of years back. And the more we can continue to highlight this, I think, the better. That's why I wanted to make sure we're doing a little bit of it here, but also in a staff meeting coming up at the Board's pleasure.
Thank you.
To have Moira back to talk in a little bit more depth about it as well.
So as we talk about a staff meeting and dig a little deeper into some of the programs, could you especially from my perspective, highlight the Lift program and the kinship care piece and show us the trends you just, I mean, I noted the numbers, but if you could chart that, that would be helpful, just so we get a better handle on what we're looking at here. Are there any other things that you just heard that you would like her to highlight?
No, but I was thinking about the Georgetown coming through and everything, but I'm really excited about our Boyz Demens initiative. And so Moira and JFS have agreed to be instrumental in helping us with those young men, and I'll give the ages at another time, that are involved with JFS and how she can help to just make that program successful. So I thank you for reaching out.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll look forward to that. So Jeff, we'll go ahead and schedule that then for later in the month.
Absolutely. I'll work with your office on that. Absolutely.
That sounds great. Thank you.
That's all I have for by-leaves, Commissioners.
Great. Thank you. All right. At this point, we'll move into the public hearing. It's a hearing to consider the 2020 Sidewalk Repair and Replacement Program. So I see that Ted Hubbard, our county engineer, is in the room. Ted, please come forward. Welcome.
I'm going to introduce Greg Flammer. He administers the program.
Very good. And we do have one speaker's card on this, but we'll take the speaker after the introduction of the issue.
My apologies. And then Greg can answer questions. Very good. Thank you.
I couldn't say it. That's all right.
I always call on Ted first.
He likes the publicity. So this will be the first of two required public hearings for our sidewalk replacement repair contract. It is, we've notified all the property owners of repairs to be made, and I believe we have someone here that would like to speak about it. So we can hear what he has to say, and then I'll see what I can do to answer that.
Could you give us just a little bit of background on the sidewalk repair program in general?
Yes. So we go out and mark the sidewalks that are out of compliance with our specs, and we give the property owners, we notify the property owners, give them an opportunity to get a contractor to fix it themselves or, you know, do it themselves if they have the ability. After that, we give them a timeframe to do that. If not, we put it on a contract, and then we'll let the contract, our contractor will make the repairs, and then we'll bill the property owners, and they have a 60-day period to pay. And if they don't pay the bill, then it can get rolled onto there as an assessment on their taxes. So in a nutshell, is how it works.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let me go ahead and call the speaker forward. Is it Stephen Mark? Am I right? Please come forward. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Welcome.
Hi. Stephen Mark. I'm a property owner of one of the marked houses. My questions have been more specific in nature towards my property rather than the actual program as a whole. I know on the card it says that I am against. That was mainly specifically for my property due to work that I am already scheduled. I am personally for the program. So I've been directed to this gentleman here, so after this meeting concludes, I'm going to speak with him regarding that. So I apologize for taking up the time, but I am personally for the program.
All right. Well, welcome. It's good to hear. All right. So the two of you will get together. Yep. That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. That is the only speaker's card I have on the project. So this is the first of our two hearings?
Yes. So we're just asking that we concluded the first hearing, and we have a date of February the 6th, I believe, for the second hearing.
Okay. All right. In that case, if there are no comments or questions?
No questions.
I will move to conclude the hearing today, knowing that we'll have a second hearing in February.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. All right. We're going to move to the regular agenda. Ted Hubbard, calling on you again. You've got a number of items here. Please give us the background.
I would be glad to. I do want to say one thing. Greg works really well. Greg Flammer really works well with the public. That's a very touchy issue when you go in. You're weighing safety against actually maybe having the property owner spend some money, and Greg does a real good job working with the public. He listens to what they have to say. He really tries to find a solution. That's why you don't get many complaints. He really tries to find a solution that, you know, benefits the property owner as well as the public. And so he has done a great job in that program, and that's why we don't hear as many complaints about it, and it works for us. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. Greg does a great job. The first item we have is a vacation pertaining to Blue Rock Road. It's a resolution that would authorize a vacation. This is at the north intersection of Chevyet Road. Several years ago, we relocated Blue Rock Road, and so the right-of-way in question is no longer needed, and we recommend that you would authorize the vacation of that right-of-way. The second item pertains to an agreement, a resolution that would authorize an agreement between Hamilton County and Coleraine Township for the installation of signal preemption at Springdale Road and Red Lobster Drive in Coleraine Township. The third item pertains to a resolution that would authorize an agreement between Hamilton County and Springfield Township for the installation of lights on a covered bridge in Springfield Township. We have a covered bridge that's off of Miles Road, and it really is pretty neat. It's been there a long time, but the township would like to install lights, and so, you know, we would oversee that with them, and that resolution would authorize that activity. And then the fourth item is a resolution that would authorize an agreement for countywide tree pruning. Davy Tree Company, we have had some, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of tree issues because ash trees and such that have died. And so we definitely, this has been very helpful. If any tree, if we get notice of any tree that needs to come down, we want to get it down now. I mean, obviously. And that's very, very important. So we would recommend that you would authorize that resolution and contract as well. I'd take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Ted. I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda items one through four.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Actually, item five pertains to you, Ted. It's a resolution reappointing one member to the TID, and it's you. So if you want to stick around to make sure that's all kosher.
I'll be here.
Sit tight, because we're not finished yet. Right. So the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda items, five through 25. Are there questions or comments regarding any of these items?
Madam President, just a couple of clarifications. For number seven, report of bid awards and contracts. Just wanted to see if Jeff could clarify for me. I see one of the contracts in 2019 was a city of Deer Park for administrative services. No money was allocated. So were they trying to get services from us, like a shared service, or were they providing services to us, or were we providing services?
I will have to check. Jackie, do you happen to have that one? I don't know if that was related to fire hydrant services.
Okay.
Where we were providing a service to them, but...
It's right here. It will be with the second document in.
Okay. And while you're looking at that, just one additional question. I noticed that there was a rejection of a bid for body armor to the Sheriff Department.
Correct.
And I just wanted a little clarification. I know they have body armor, but was it more than we anticipated?
I believe it was. I can follow up with purchasing and find out the specific reasons for the rejection. The Deer Park item was where we're providing services to them. It's not the fire hydrant program, but it is the surplus auction program where we're allowing Deer Park to cooperate with our surplus auction program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one additional... And one additional, number 10, for the HVAC services.
Correct. It's the Justice Center, I believe.
Yeah, okay. There was a $14,000 allowance added on, which still made this vendor lower than the other vendor, but is the $14,000 for any unexpected repairs? Are we putting in an ability for them to use that $14,000?
No, I'm not certain. Holly, do you know what the $14,000 allowance on that project was?
I can call out and find out.
Okay, we can find out. I'm not certain exactly what the $14,000 allowance was for.
The resolution indicates the full amount, but...
Yeah, but I don't know that it speaks to the rationale for it.
And since it is still below the other vendor quite a bit, I mean, I don't have a problem with passing it now, but I'd like to know.
Okay, we'll follow up with you and let you know exactly what the allowance was for.
All right, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Great, thank you. I do want to highlight, some of the items from Environmental Services are partnership grants that we continue to do, and so that's positive news. So, I have no other questions or comments, so I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items five through 25.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. And we also have a travel item, requesting authorization to travel at the county's expense. The coroner has an employee going to Anaheim, California, and an employee going to Tampa, Florida. I will move to approve of the travel item.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the commission?
I have nothing.
All right, very good. Given that, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.